Mr. Price. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, please bow your head. Father in heaven, I come before you today in your presence to ask you to grant us the strength and knowledge and to give us the guidance to attend to all the tasks today, whether little or big. It is your will that we will achieve through your strength. Thank you for your everlasting presence, oh Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Reading and approval of minutes from January 3rd, please.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by Hack. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Any changes, additions?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. All in favor of this agenda, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Five eight, engineers report. Jared, come on up. Pull up a chair if you want.
I would like to, yeah. I don't know how fast this will go here tonight. What I have is a couple of normal things, but one item that'll just take a little bit longer. So generally, engineers report, our water storage system project is what I'd call ninety-nine percent done. We're holding money from TAN right now and money from the end tanks and money from electrician just to close things out. And we kind of intentionally did that, if you remember, we're getting quotes from TAN to do some additional work. We did meet with Angelo one time in the last month to kind of go through some details for those guys. They're not in a super big hurry to get it. Mostly it's abandoning the valve bolts and some fence removals, some electrical work. Nothing really they can do until the snow melts. And so I'm fine with it. We've had some email back and forth to answer questions, like I said, but that stuff will be coming. And if you want to do something, you can. If you don't want to, you don't have to. But this is a water project. We do have the cost share on this. That's the nice thing about doing a water project. The state water commission has sixty percent cost share for us for whatever we decide to do. And I'll keep us within the confines of what's eligible and not. So no approvals, just a quick discussion to keep everybody looped.
Jared, quick question on the water tower. I've had this question about twenty-five times now. The white light on the west facing east, what is that for? Is it FAA? Is it security? If so, would it be on the other side or the, on the west side? I don't know what to tell people.
I'm not.
Is it too bright or what's the issue?
Who's asking?
Very bright.
If it's less than a hundred and fifty feet tall, usually we don't need an FAA light. So it could be something we can maybe take off if it's bothersome, but I can find out.
And it only bothers one person, but I've had the question asked many times.
Okay.
So I'm like, I don't know. I don't know how to answer it.
Okay. Let me find out. It might be something we can.
Because wasn't there going to be yard light, a pole on the west side for?
I mean, we do want some light just for security up there.
Yeah, yeah.
But I can't answer that.
Right.
Granted, we're here, I'd ask them, but I don't.
Not very important.
No, that's a good question.
I don't like to, I don't know.
Okay. Sanitary sewer collection system. Obviously, you guys know we awarded contract to CC Steel, giving those to proceed to do some televising. You guys have been doing televising regularly. Well, right now you can get fifty thousand bucks in free money to do televising. So you're going to do a very large chunk of televising this summer, which is... These are all clay sewer mains that you haven't had televised in the recent past. So you've got kind of library of ones that have been done recently. We're going to pretty much get the rest of them done that haven't been done in the last few years. So that's the goal there.
Solid.
They'll be here in March. What the scope of the, like then what happens is we watch them, we write a report, give you a report, town, get turned into the health department, they want to know what's going on. You know, it's not just for your guys' sake. It's, you know, they're trying to figure out the needs across the state as well. So a bunch of towns doing televising next year because of the money available. So that's all done, awarded. The, I'm going to skip over, the one I'm going to spend most time on is the comp plan. Corrective work at Expedition Estates. You know, I just email their attorney every once in a while. As you guys know, there's some major deficiencies within the subdivision Expedition Estates. And it's really, we can't issue building permits until it's corrected. And what I've been told is kind of similar to, you know, what we know before is that they have a contractor lined up to come and fix this stuff. We had that same thing lined up last year and then they just, it kind of fizzled out. I'm not doing anything. We could, as a city, get serious and mad about it, but right now the onus is on them because they can't develop their lots and sell and do things until they get their infrastructure work fixed. So if you're okay waiting, I'm okay waiting, but.
Do you know who their proposed contractor is?
He won't tell me.
Interesting.
I think it's just until they can get a signed contract. He has had contractors call me, like BK Consulting, Maseraba, license on these, the regional local ones. But he's negotiating with one right now and I don't know who it is. We kind of had it lined up last year. They had sent kind of a proposed scope of work and we talked about it here and then okayed it. But then they, for whatever reason, part of the way is I had to go to money.
Okay.
And here we sit. It's not a detriment to the town, it's just kind of unusable subdivision right now.
However, in my opinion, if there is growth and there is, in our energy industry and there's jobs, having lots that are not marketable or buildable is a deficit.
Yeah. And I don't know well enough if HCDC partnered with them or gave them money or not because it's all privately funded.
It's all privately funded.
It's all privately, yeah. That's my status update there. But comprehensive plan. So HCDC and the city are kind of working together on updating a comp plan. The last time we did one was two thousand and twelve. And so that is, that is what A2S is helping mostly with is do this work. From the back two pages of it is the part that talks about infrastructure. So that's the part we are helping with, okay? And so looking back at this from two thousand and twelve, it did talk about, you know, some old water mains, some old sewer mains, some growth areas, some different infrastructure related items. Some of those things the city has addressed since two thousand and twelve and some that you haven't. So what we did was we spent some time with Dan, talking with Dave, with Monte, and tried to come up with a capital improvement plan list for the next ten years. Now, I realize that you're not probably going to do all of these or even a lot of these, but having a capital improvement plan is valuable tool that you can use to forecast and. I'll just, I'm going to go through them quick, but you guys got to tell me how, you know, stop, explain more or not. I'll say this, that the majority of the items, not majority, a good deal of the items are sewer related. You guys can get cost share for water main stuff or water tower or water tank or pump. So that's a lot easier. Right now, if you wanted to do a sewer infrastructure project, there's not a lot of free money for Hazen. If you had little different demographics, you'd probably qualify for some, but not in this county. So there is some hope that the legislature will come up with some funding for sewer like they have for water. So I'd maybe be paying attention to that and support that if it comes up, but. So we broke them down into priorities and then gave it a name, a description, linked it to the map. If you guys have a copy of what I sent you, it's got an exact copy of this list and the map. So it kind of works back and forth, but. So first item is the televising. You're doing that already. That's funded, that's moving forward. That's what you need to assess sewer conditions in a bunch of the whole part of town. Lead service line inventory. There's a directive across the state to get an inventory and then begin a plan to replace lead service lines. There's, I don't know how far into the details you want me to dive, but there's an effort being made there to get money, place two on the priority list for funding. You should be able to access grant money to do your inventory and/or replacements. I don't really have a plan for that yet because you haven't been awarded it yet. Once you get awarded, the state has six million dollars to help with that. It might be a matter of just us digging through the records to, you know, explain or to narrow it down, you know, these five hundred are plastic or copper. These ones are unknown and we may have to do some door-to-door work to photograph. I'm not sure yet, but I'm putting dollar amount number on there, fifty thousand dollars, which I don't think you'll need because there's, like I said, I bet you're on the priority list for a hundred percent cost share to help with that. But just some minor, you know, upcoming items, public works and engineering related on those first two. The next thing, which was kind of a carryover from the last one in two thousand and twelve, review city development ordinances. Dan, if I meant, if I say that wrong too, let me know, but.
That's good.
There, you know, some towns are doing a lot of development and are regularly used to dealing with developers on what to do. I think we learned a little lesson from Expedition Estates that we maybe should have had a development agreement. Maybe should have had a few more rules and regulations for them. And with the energy stuff going on, might be time to review your development ordinances. So recommendation, but I think some of that was carryover. Water meter replacement. I've got a dollar amount of eight hundred thousand dollars on there for work that can usually come from a sewer funding program or a water funding program. It's something I know you guys have been talking about here for a couple of years. I'm not here to push these things, I'm just here to explain what we have, you know, on the radar. This whole top tier or what we're calling the, you know, tier one priority list items that will probably become sooner rather than later. What happens with water meters is when they begin to age, they slow down and so they don't record all the billing. You guys are paying for water from some of those water. You should be then capturing that money, otherwise you're losing out on revenue. Plus, your equipment becomes obsolete for metering and reading. You eventually have to replace that stuff anyways.
The water meter quote there is that?
It's not a quote.
Or estimated that cost of that? Is that just to update the pump to a current pump? Or would that be to take the city to, is it the Bluetooth or wireless, whatever it is, like what Dodge and Halley are using where you just drive by and get a water meter reading? Or what is that price point? Is that?
You're opening a can of worms because we can go to catalog and pick out a hundred different things.
Okay.
And I think it's based on a budget number that you guys had on a quote. Right? It's probably a system similar to what you have now, I would think, right? You have a tower, antenna in town?
No, it's a radio read that they drive around.
And so you could keep that system or we could put like an antenna on some things so they don't have to drive around. You could also upgrade a little fancier meter that Monte could shut off automatically from here. They're not paying the bills. You could also do ones where, you know, I could log into my account and see real-time data. There's so many, some are satellite read ones, some are Verizon meters. They're, when you get to that point, it's going to be a, you know, so the eight hundred thousand? I'm not exactly sure what level. Probably some mid-level system is what I'm thinking. Lead service line replacement. Well, once you do your inventory over the next eighteen months, like the health department's requiring, I would imagine there will be some lead service lines that we have to replace. Hopefully not, hopefully nobody has any in town, but we had to do a hundred of them in Lisbon. And it was just chance, right? I mean, some people might have galvanized, some might have copper, some might have polyplastic, whatever. They're not all lead from a hundred years ago, but some were. And it just, you guys maybe know yourselves if it's common running to them here or not, but I would expect that we will find some. So that's number five on the list. Number six, sanitary sewer spot repairs. Well, when we televise this summer, I would expect that we'll find some problems. I mean, you've got two spot repairs now that you already have to do from televising from a few years ago. So I budgeted three hundred thousand dollars to deal with those. Sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. What that means is, well, once we have televising data, fifty blocks of clay sewer mains, we assess the conditions, I will bet there will be some that we're going to want to reline. Like if it's a block that's cracked and shattered, but it's still, integrity is good, you can take advantage of that pipe by installing a sock inside of them. I don't believe you guys have any of those right now, but there are other towns that are doing the whole town.
Casey owns something.
Yeah.
We, first, we stuff.
Very expensive sock.
Yeah, it is, yes, yes.
That's the only place in town we did it, right? Is that an alley?
Well, then I think up, up in, I guess, up, I guess, like Rosenau's.
I was going to say, I thought we did that.
Did we do that at Barret cheese too? Okay.
No.
No, he did his own, yeah, that's right. And Jerome Newberger did his own from his basement.
Yeah, there's been a few of them that tell them to reline their personal services.
The only one that's not was that alley though, where we did sewer. How long ago was that, Casey, do you remember?
Probably twenty-ten or so.
And you guys know, the only, if you're going to do a block, you might as well do twenty blocks and then you might, you know, get funding, try and get maximize grant amount and just make it affordable, right? You don't want to do one block at a time. Excuse me. Okay, so that's what that is. Next one, extraterritorial zoning and subdivision regulations. Again, as you see development outside the city limits, you guys have some control over that. And it sounds to me like there's not a lot of tools in place to regulate what's going on within your ET. So it probably should be some effort spent. And I have twenty-five thousand dollars listed on there. He's a message board. I know that's been in the works for some time. Replacement of an old sign, I think the thought is to go digital. Again, just trying to put down on paper the items because they're all going to go inside the comp plan of, you know, kind of needed work or planned work in the next few years. Main street beautification. This came kind of from a couple of questions I've had from staff here about can we get some nice decorative streetlights? Can we get some planters and trees and some things like that? That's a yes, you can, you know, it's, you could do the ballouts in the corners. You don't have to take it to the level of the DOT did a couple of years ago with the pavement markings. But there are a lot of towns that will, you know, main streets that'll tax themselves because they want some beautification things down. So I put that down as a, that, well, Dan and I spent quite a bit of time doing this and he helped me prioritize these a ton, right? So we've got in that second tier of things. And I guess if a, if a main street group wanted to come together or something like that, we could help them go to the, the governor's got money set aside for these, you know, main street things. But again, I'm not going to push it unless there's a want or a need, you want to start pursuing it. Lift station upgrades. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but you have six lift stations in town. We were looking at adding some smart electronics to two of them, to the two and I think twenty-five thousand bucks apiece. But you do have four other lift stations then that, the control panels on lift stations generally last about fifteen to twenty years. So in due time, those are going to be coming up. So I've got a project, or it's twenty-five thousand dollars to just add some, you know, auto dialer or whatever you want to call it. Auto dialers, the technology's from ten years ago, but whatever they use now. We just budgeted a hundred thousand dollars to do the new control system, smart technology on other four as well. So.
I'd like to see that bumped up to top of the list to priority one instead of two actually.
I should have mentioned, this is yours, guys, right? Like you guys, I'll say, you know, we just, we put this together and that is fantastic. And I'll wait till we get to the end, but I'll make a note of that.
Because some of the hardest conversations we have in this room. When residents come in and we're talking about our lift stations or backups or septic or, and, yeah, if we can alleviate that somehow, that'd be more priority to me.
And it's maybe not that much money, but if you remember underneath the water project, we put in a lot of the SCADA, the computer system here.
Yep.
We do need just, we need that antenna and that system in each panel. So you could do one at a time or you could do all six. And I just, we just lumped them together into six here. All right, getting down on the list a little further. Sanitary sewer force main replacement. So what I'll show you here on this map, this yellow line is actually cast iron force main. Cast iron pipe generally has a finite life and especially when you put it into sanitary sewer conditions, you have not had a break on it, but it is, it needs to be on your radar. But that pipe someday will be a problem. And everything we do now is PVC. PVC does not, it does not deteriorate. Metal pipe, concrete pipe, when it's exposed to sanitary sewer conditions, does deteriorate. So that project, you could probably say any of these projects could become priority number one overnight if we started having problems with it. But eleven C there, that one's, excuse me, twelve, project twelve, the yellow, going north and south. That one should be on your list. Sanitary sewer replacement North Hazen, I think I'll just mention here, there's a bottleneck. A lot of, all of this sewer up here eventually drains through this line. It goes from a ten inch down to an eight inch line. And it's an eight inch line over to the lift station. That is a carryover from your two thousand and twelve project. So there's been a known problem there for a long time. I mean, there's a lot of systems that surcharge. When you go from an eight inch pipe to a ten inch pipe, you pretty much double the capacity of it. So that's really what's needed is, especially if you decide you want to grow to that north side. It, one of those things that you, go ahead.
I think that we already did that, didn't we?
Part of it. You guys did part of that line, not all of it though.
All the stuff that's in there. All the stuff in the yellow there in the middle, I think that's all done, isn't it?
I think you did this much, is it to about the end of the trailer park?
We tore up.
Yeah. We tore up a lot of that street, yeah.
Right in the middle.
Yeah, yeah, right in the middle was tore up.
And it started, it started from, from the side of County twenty-seven.
We took out that whole lift station and replaced everything from that.
And we were right up the center, but I don't remember, did we go the whole?
Well, I remember standing in the trench right in front between the trailer park and the tennis courts there and Galen Jensen's there.
About my little cul-de-sac was over, I think at Starbucks, going to the nursery. Delivery from there.
To the east.
Right.
From their east, and I thought so too. Yeah, actually, I said, I remember there was a day when all days with their engineer and Cipriano was very unhappy when it was very clear in my mind. Because we had, we had TAN do that project.
Always part of the two thousand and fifteen surge project stuff.
We knew, we knew you did part of it. I don't remember if, it doesn't matter, I'll get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get it adjusted. But I think, I think there's part of it left, we could just be wrong on the map too, Casey. But I'll make a note. Street rehabilitation, you guys did the whole town in two thousand and eighteen. So what we're generally expecting is that ten years later, twenty-twenty-eight-ish is what I have on this list, that you're going to be doing for a chip sale. You guys did a lot of milling overlay, a lot of patching, a lot of major stuff. So ten years later, that feels about right to be budgeting for that. Maybe then we'll do some patching in areas that need to be done, but, you know, the last one was like seven million. I would expect that the next one would be a million, right? That's just no overlay, no steel coat. Paving gravel streets within North Side subdivision in eighteen, that project was bid as an alternate. And it was not awarded, I believe, because of protests up there. So have it on the list here. The dollar amount is not correct, I can already tell that's wrong, but, you know, as you grow and, you know, it's, you're going eighty percent filled in with subdivision and might be time to approach those folks again. But it's got to be on your radar and a potential list. And I would expect that, two ways you could do that. You guys could initiate that and ask them to protest again, or you could make them bring a petition to you guys to do it. But generally, you share those costs, you know, with those people that benefit from that. Sixteen stormwater drainage master plan. You have a master water plan and master sewer plan for your entire town from two thousand and twelve, and I would call those still very appropriate. You don't really have a master stormwater plan and you've been able to get by without one for some time. This is again, carried over from the list, two thousand and twelve. I see some benefits from it. I guess I don't want to get into the, it's pretty far down your priority list, but when you have developments, when you have, you know, localized flooding, when you have different things going on, then it's, you know, it's handy to have a plan. Plus, as you grow, like if you go further to the north, one of the first things that'll probably have to happen is some type of drainage, you know, analysis or study. And you might have to go a little further or whoever your engineer is at that time, you don't have to figure things out because you can't, you can't grow and then, you know, shed a problem onto somebody else. I'm just assuming that it's going to be growth to the north. So anyway, stormwater master plan. County Road Industrial Park and County Road twenty-seven and eighteen Collector Road. Those kind of go with each other, I think. Going to the map, Monte, that's just always been kind of shown as, you know, your growth and development area. Again, carryovers in two thousand and twelve. I don't know how many conversations there's been within the comp plan discussion of how big a need this is or not, but it can be development driven. You know, you could have a local partner come in and say, we want a spot to develop. And, you know, you do as a city could say, well, we've, you know, planned this area to be our industrial park and let's, let's start talking. But when you, it's a lot easier when you have a partner. And you've got somebody that's willing to create jobs. And then when you do have a partner, then you can access some funds. You know, if you can just go build an industrial park without any idea what's coming or going to happen, there's a risk and it's scary, but I guess just item number seventeen is the industrial park up there. Along with that would be the road loop, they'll bring that out to the highway. So that's number eighteen is County Road twenty-seven and eighteen Collector Road. Number nineteen. Number nineteen actually is specific to growth too. It's a stormwater capacity report for the north side. What this is showing is that this area here kind of acts as a stormwater pond. And as you grow and fill this in, it's going to have to kind of be modeled that way. We have some flood plain area here, you know, as we get further along this ditch. So I would expect there will have to be a stormwater pond built in here at some point. So that's kind of the modeling and, and planning for that, but you probably won't proceed with that until, you know, you've got somebody that wants to develop, right? So that's why it's farther down the list, but you know, if somebody comes in tomorrow and wants to develop that and they've got a good plan, well, we might be. Talking about doing some stormwater modeling or making them do it.
So even though that's privately owned, we can still develop the, the plan?
You could, you could. You couldn't take it to a hundred percent plan, but we could. Yeah, we could, we could be one step, I mean, let's just say you get a, a plan from a developer and you don't like it or you don't trust it. You might want your own evaluation done anyway.
At a minimum, you could prohibit development until they meet your standards.
Specific.
Yeah. On that note, do you guys have a stormwater management plan or set of ordinances?
Nothing.
We, Mercer County under the Water Resource Board, just in the last two, three years, we invested an awful lot of time and energy in putting something like that together. If you guys want to look at adopting something like that, or even that one, or even just an ordinance referring it to them, just so that you've got something in place when a developer comes knocking on the door.
And you know what, that was maybe what I was getting at here on that number three, the review of the city development ordinances. So I agree with you a high percent, yeah. You can have, be one step ahead rather than reacting if you don't have something in place.
Yeah, because we had, at least for out by Lake Shore Estates, we had some pretty unhappy people that. We didn't have a mechanism in place to deal with that and then dealing with it behind the eight ball, when there's a problem versus being a little more proactive. So might be worth some thought anyways.
All right, I'm going to keep cruising here unless you guys stop me. So number twenty, Miller Land Development. That's the big green twenty on there, so that area is in a area with a flood risk. If we were in Fargo, some developer would come and say, well, I can lift that area. I can do a Loma or Lomar or Lomar F and get it up and out of the development plain and, and develop it. That is what, you know, when, when, when development growth is happening like gangbusters, then that's, you know, the private industry will take care of it. You could also take that on yourselves as the city. For what I need is, you know, it might be a great spot to build a stormwater pond in the middle of it and then use that there to raise the lots up out of the plane, flood plain. So what I have here is a flood impact study, land use infrastructure master plan for the Miller Land to be efficient development for. So do a study, basically, but as we already now, we're waiting for some private development to want to do that. But that is a good growth, you know, area for the town. Uh, Hoover Land Development, basically the same thing on the north side. That area was platened at one time, but that plat was vacated. Again, usually driven by, by private entities, but there are cities that will do, you know, public housing development, you know, maybe through the, you know, HCD, CT group. And then getting pretty far down the list here, wastewater lagoon de-sledge, really did a de-sledge project a few years ago. You know, maybe every fifty years you'd go and clean out three to six inches of sludge out on the lagoons. It's not an issue for you yet that I know of. You maybe know if you started getting some violations, but that hasn't happened. Wastewater Lagoon aerator. You had one at one time. Generally, what an aerator would do is give you a couple of different options. We can, we can build deeper lagoon cells by having an aerator because they. Lagoon cells usually an eight foot deep cell, the bottom two feet is just dead stories and our, our usable story is the next three feet and then the, the top three, four is your freeboard. Well, if you have an aerator, it'll, it'll circulate the, the wind and, and the, and the air and the sunlight faster, so you get by with deeper lagoon cells. Can be a benefit because if, if we grow, which hopefully Hazen grows a little bit. We could build up those, those cells out there or it could be something again that if we start having some. Some violations or aren't able to treat the wastewater for the town because of some industry, because of growth, because of whatever reason. Aerator could be an option. Levy recertification, so you guys went through this not that long ago, but at some point you will have to do a levy recertification project. Hopefully it's, I have it out here for twenty thirty, so that's seven years from now. Remove trees, fill in gopher holes, fix erosion, have everything surveyed to make sure it is high, ledges do settle. And that usually we build them with the foot, all of them that need to be, just so that we account for that. That will have, will be coming. Stormwater storage. So once you get a master plan or whatever you're talking, talking about, I could just kind of see by looking at your map. Do you have large storm sewer in the main middle part of town? I have a guarantee that if we did a stormwater master plan for your town, there would need to be some storage added in the middle of town. Why do you do that? Your storm sewer is designed for a five-year storm event, and if you get anything more than a five-year storm event, it ends up in the streets. Worst case scenario though, it ends up in, in homes and floods places. So usually what ends up driving these type of projects is, is a flood. We get a, you know, three-inch rain during critical snowmelt time, we could have some flooding because where is it going to go, right? So I foresee at some point, you know, there, we're going to end up talking about a stormwater, some stormwater storage in the middle of town because of some catastrophic events. But right now, it's not a need, but, or not a priority, but I could just tell you from looking at enough stormwater reports, you guys could use some storage in the middle of town.
Was that ever talked about? Last flood, when was that in oh nine? Was that, was that ever talked about?
There was a study then on that channel that we would add in, on the south side, I think. All the way down the creek, I think we're supposed to do something like that to the Miller Land.
There you go.
And.
Yeah.
Yeah. Expeditional states, yeah, yeah.
You literally can't big storm, build storm sewer big enough because it would break us, right? And we get, it's all probability, right? So we designed storm sewer for a five-year event, that is, it's the, I shouldn't even use five-year event, it's the, it's the one in twenty event, is what they're saying. Every twenty years, you're going to get a, a storm like that. And we're putting in thirty, thirty-six inch storm sewer and it feels big, but it's really not that big. So you offset that by having storage, you have floodable spots and floodables, a pond could be a park, it could be a ditch. I mean, those are all modeled in stormwater holding areas.
Moses Park is storage water.
Exactly. Your middle of town is so dense though, right there, with really no place to put it, that I, I just know that if we do a stormwater master plan, that you'll need something in that area. Maybe it's down southeast of the tracks, maybe it's the Miller Land area, I, I don't know, but. Anyways, and then basically the end of it is just some backup generators that will need some replacement here soon. I think it sounds like you have two pretty good ones right now, but by twenty thirty-two, those are going to be wearing out and are going to be, being replaced, so. This is a capital improvements plan, and it's got an implementation year, twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-three, so it's like the next ten-year plan. And within this comp plan, this data is going to get put in. And so for the next board, the next, the board after that, everybody's going to know that you've got kind of a, an eye on your infrastructure and, you know, kind of a roadmap of how it should be addressed. Kind of going back to the beginning, a lot of these are related to sanitary sewer. So there's really no easy funding source for sanitary sewer for you. I mean, loan money, you can get loan money anytime you want, but if legislature comes up with something for sewer, or they're doing some, some cost share. Or you become eligible for something, I think it would be wise to, you know, do your lift station control panels and do some lining and, and. Try and knock a few of these things out at once and then some of the little things like the service lines and meters and. The zoning stuff and the development ordinances, you know, those should just be addressing regularly here. Or if some group brings a project forward, you know, assist them, but. Any other, Jerry mentioned moving that lift station control panel up. I can move wherever you want. I can, I can lump it into group one or I could do. Whatever you think.
Yeah, originally we had that in group three. We moved it in group three up to group two.
You guys tell me where to move it, right? I mean, if you wanted to.
I'd like to see it up, up to the top, but that's just my opinion. One of our most important infrastructures we have is our sewer, so I don't know, why would, wouldn't want to focus on that a little bit, but that.
And I mean, this is a roadmap. Like I said, what you could do.
Yeah, I'm not saying we should need to do this project next year, but it's, needs to be highlighted in, in our close radar, in my opinion.
My role, right? I mean, you don't have somebody out seeking grants all the time. Monty watches for them, but I watch for things and if I know that that's. Getting to your top priority in town, then I'll just watch a little harder too.
Yeah, I'd be great.
So Dan, I spent quite a bit of time working on this and then, like I said, we just visited with the other groups to try and have this list and the map and. That will be a subset of your comp. There will probably need to be, you know, some co-mingling with the stuff A E two S has done, has done and, and some of our stuff. Future land use plan and parks and, you know, whatever other priorities you guys have in town. This is just going to remain kind of a draft for the moment and I will end up giving it to A E two S to incorporate into their plan. And then we'll finish it off.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any questions, or Jerry?
It's like drinking from a fire hose.
Yeah.
It's, I don't know.
Thanks for all the work. Thanks, Dan. Appreciate the work on this.
Matt.
I'm good, man.
At home.
I'll be pretty quick here, but thanks, guys.
You bet. All right, moving down to. Six, we have free reduced hall rent for two, two groups, New Horizons and S M C Hospice. Anybody wants to attack those individually or together?
Motion approves six B and C.
Push by hack. Second my stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same side? All right. Approved, thank you. All right, rolling down to the reports, water sewer.
I met with David, our water gentleman, to discuss some of the things that were also on that list and then also the fact we have received our report back from Pace. On the televising that they did do and there were some recommendations on there. And so we, we had some discussion about reaching out to more, as well as reaching out to Pace. And the vendor selected for the funded exploration that will be coming up to see the capability of all parties and what possible priority it may be. For the currently identified items that need to be fixed and also to address. In the course of the televising coming down the line here and failure to recommend. Who would, who would be responsible, who would propose to be on, would that equity be provided if you do the repairs that are identified? So we got that included with that and seeking out all the different answers we have to go through. Other than that, life's good.
Thanks, Dan. Streets Cemetery.
Really nothing new to report other than we've had some better weather and guys are moving some more snow, trying to widen, widen the intersections out or make them more safe. For basketball traffic at the intersection. Still, still have the, the snow gate opportunity at the top of the list. Mike stopped by that, that establishment heading to Miss Mark this past weekend and sent us a couple of photos and there's opportunity there, so. Yeah, I think we'll try and pursue that forward and. Ah, there's an opportunity for us to use it and try it, so I think we, I'll talk with Mike a little more. And Dave and see if we can go forth with that, so.
Dave, anything?
Don't, we're all covered.
All the cylinders are back and fixed?
Yes, yeah.
All skid stairs are good?
Yeah.
How are we with cutting edges?
Good. I think we have three sets for each out of them.
I don't know if that was ever mentioned. We actually went with a heavier duty, Dave.
Yeah, during the pandemic, the, the good ones weren't available and when they became available, that's what we got, then they last way longer.
Wonder what those rubber ones have done that we talked about at one point?
I talked to different outfits and they just never, ever recommended them for, for payloaders. Or for the state trucks or highway trucks with the belly, belly blades just because of the down pressure and that type of stuff.
Thank you. Casey?
I don't have anything this time.
Okay. Dusty's not here. Monty?
I did.
Please the fire?
I did check with Kim. He still has nothing definite on that engine. Last communication with the vendor was on December twenty-third, will expedite shipping as soon as it's available. And ETA is not available at this time. So we're just kind of in home mode.
And we shouldn't do anything with the old one until?
We can't do anything with the old one. At this point.
All right, moving on. Teddy, Pace maintenance contract.
Basically, it's the annual contract with Pace. I visited, as I indicated in the notes, I visited with Jared and Mike a little bit about it. They would recommend still contract, or still entering into the inspection agreement with them for televising. Just in case there's something else that comes up in the meantime, or if there's things before or after CNC steel gets into town so that we have somebody lined up that we can contact.
I agree.
And I didn't know if the change in prices on, on the form there, like everything else, there was a little bit of a change.
And the approval, the approval of this does not. And the approval, the approval of this does not indicate that they're spending money. It just makes a contract put into place, so we need to make contact and we have a mechanism for building out.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. I'd make a motion to move forward with entering into a contract.
Motion by Hiller. Second, second by Stern, discussion. Rule call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Owen Howard.
Aye. Kerry, thank you. Ten B, Audit Service Matt, Raff and Mayor, Monty? Been waiting a while.
Yeah, I was beginning to wonder if they were still doing audits, but, uh, they sent us the letter, their estimated, or their cost will not exceed eleven thousand dollars to conduct our year-end audit for calendar year 2022. Uh, no, nothing definite as to when they would be here to do it. They'll communicate that later as we go along. So I guess I just need your approval to, to enter into the, to have Raff and Mayor do our audit again.
Okay, need a motion?
Summoned.
Motion by Hack. Second, second by Stern, discussion. Rule call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Owen Howard.
Aye, motion carried. These guys are easy to work with. All right, that takes us down to thirteen, Public Comments. Young man, you got anything for us? No, all right. Okay, approval of bills.
Need a few extra on your desk, on the table. Pace apparently thought they had sent us the bill in November and nobody had seen it until today when they sent an email to Jared saying, we're still showing this bill is open, so.
I was wondering if that was from something in the past.
The four, the forty-five hundred eighty-eight dollar?
No, that's like fifteen grand.
Oh, fifteen, seven, nineteen, okay.
On the email that I sent out today. Motion to approve the bill.
Motion by Hiller.
Second.
Second by her. Discussion. Rule call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Owen Howard.
Aye. Motion carried. Me adjourned, thank you.